She was squeaking it out. It doesn't?
Seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, roll call.
Andrea?
Here.
Jay?
Here.
Ross?
Yes.
Nancy?
Here.
Eric?
Yes.
Sarah?
Here.
Okay, upcoming legislation.
Okay. Any questions on the transfers of funds? I think there should be any. Hearing done. Who we will go to? Either the noise ordinance or the solar panels, which are up next. I got one comment on the noise ordinance, and that was just to add something on baffles for motorcycles coming through the village. Did anyone have anything else that they wanted to add to the draft?
I think if we did that, we could just do all vehicles, right? That would take care of straight pipe vehicles also.
I think you could. Baffle, you have muscle.
Well, I mean, but that would cover.
You could say, yeah, I mean, you could say any loud noise emanating from car, truck.
We already have.
That's in there.
Excessive noise or smoke. I mean, we have a separate ordinance for excessive noise and smoke.
Right.
Would that, being redundant, would that be bad, or okay?
It depends how you want your officers to write the ticket, whether you want it under the vehicle code. The noise ordinance. I think leaving it in the vehicle code is probably safest.
I think it's the cleanest.
Because it's still there.
Add it to that.
So.
And I mean.
Because the complaints that come in are for a vehicle, so when it's marked down by the.
Right.
Dispatch, it's coming in as a vehicle, and I think you probably want to keep it there.
Right.
It's easier for a magistrate to understand when citing or prosecuting someone under vehicle code than it is under noise ordinance. But they can be hit with the noise ordinance if they're sitting outside the bar, cranking up their stereo, right?
So they actually have a noise ordinance in a vehicle at the same time, and I know our courts, they don't mind seeing those stacked quote-unquote charges. It gives them options. And I hate to use the word stacked, but multiple violations for the same occurrence.
Yeah, it's rare that our officers are writing multiple violations, so unless it's a driving under suspension.
Right.
Tail light.
Where they have to, yeah.
Pulling over for him, so I think you're safe with that.
Solar ordinance, should you choose to go forward with it, I spoke with Alan, and I talked with another jurisdiction. If y'all have a concern about a solar farm, probably the cleanest thing to do would be to direct me to draft a moratorium and give you time to consider real legislation. If you have any concerns that a huge solar farm is going to come in. You could attempt to legislate solar panels. In a sense, with all the new HOAs, you're kind of stepping on their discretion, so to speak, because they're all gonna put in. You can only have it forward-facing on the front of the house. You can't have it in the rear. You can't have it on the ground. You really don't want to get in a fight with the new homeowners associations. I think what I'm hearing from y'all is a desire to prevent commercial farms.
Yes.
From coming in. Alan did point out, and we know that there's a large land user coming in that's going to put solar down solely for its own use and not for resale. So if you wanted a moratorium to think about it, you could enter a moratorium. If you just want legislation that prevents mass farms from coming in using the acreage to basically gather and resell electricity.
Could we do legislation that states they must consume fifty percent of the power on property? Wouldn't that do away with a solar farm? I mean.
You could, I mean, you can legislate anything you want.
Well, I'm asking, you're the one that's gonna have to defend it in court.
Yeah, I mean, you can legislate no farms, you can legislate no resale, you can legislate whatever you want. All of it can be challenged because it's land use. You know, someone's gonna say, this is my land, I can do what I want to.
But if we know that, then we just don't allow them to do that, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you guys are the elected officials, it's what are you hearing from your constituents? What do you want to do? Do you want to prohibit use, reuse, sale, resale? And I think that, you know, Jay, you've got the land use subcommittee. It might be something that you all want to kick around and come back to council with a recommendation on, because I'm not getting any clear or clean vibes from anyone on, number one, a problem, and number two, what legislation it is we want. I know that, you know, a lot of jurisdictions are saying it can only be on the house, it can only be on the front, it can only be one story, two stories high. It can't be on the ground, different things like that. We can pull different forms of legislation and look at it. I just don't know that you're in a situation now to say, Bill, this is what we want, go draft it, go find it, let's do it.
I think we're in agreeance that we, especially in residential, we don't, we don't want them on the ground. I think we've all been agreeance to that. The only thing I would say is how I feel about it is if you're putting them in solely for profit, that's a no. If you're using them like, you know, for business reasons, they're using it. They have a little extra over including homeowners. I don't care what they do with it, but my personal opinion is that I would not want them if they, their sole purpose was to sell it.
Which is gonna be a file for resale.
Right, and there's no definition by ORC what a solar farm is, correct? There's no acreage number? I can't, I couldn't find.
No, there's no definitive label, because I mean, realistically, the school could put up twenty solar panels out there, and someone will say, oh, that's a solar farm. But it goes back to Nancy's point, which is if you're going to use it for your own consumption and only resell what the electrical utility says you have in an overage in a month, I think you're fine. A moratorium, everyone knows what a moratorium is, right? It's just council saying you cannot do this on a go-forward basis. You can certainly enter a moratorium and investigate it and think about it, or you can wait until Jay talks it over with land use and come up with some definitions that are workable for everybody.
I think we're gonna try the moratorium first.
Yeah. So we have some place, yes.
Alan, where are we with that? Was that the sole reason they wanted to annex that property?
It's already annexed, it's already zoned, it's in here, he's looking at building. We will probably have it, we don't have another next meeting scheduled with him yet, but we probably will within the next couple of weeks. And he is wanting to bring in thirty-nine acres of solar panels, but he's wanting that strictly for his own use. So if we go into a moratorium, by the time we get the moratorium legislation in front of council, this guy's gonna be seeing the stuff saying, well, what's that mean? They just told me I can't come in.
Well, a moratorium, we can probably vote on next week.
Moratorium, you can vote on next week.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's just a matter of formality.
They're not putting them in to sell it. They're putting it in for their own, so I don't think that they would be bothered at all by that.
Moratorium, though, would make it so they couldn't do that.
No one can put it in at all.
I mean, I could put a moratorium together for you all to consider for the next meeting, and Alan will send it out a week before, three days before. That'll simply say there's, you know, village council recognizes that solar power is good, that solar power is used in the village. However, with the growth of solar farms and the use of land solely to resell electricity.
Yeah.
We have concerns over limited land that we have within the village, so we are, you know, we hereby find that there's reason for us to enter a moratorium against any solar farms, which we are defining as the sole use to.
But you can make accept, you can make exceptions.
So we're saying, no, all of it, we can make.
Well, moratoriums.
The moratorium stops applications coming in from being approved until you have a later vote. You can always rescind a moratorium, you can always give a variance to a moratorium, but the moratorium basically holds.
Why can't we just do legislation if we know what we wanted to say?
You can if you know what you want to say.
I, if we can agree on a percentage, that would stop just a straight solar farm.
I mean, they're gonna use whatever percent.
We can't know.
Well, if they got, if they got a hundred acres of solar panels in a garden shed, they're probably not using it just for garden shed. And I mean, South Central Power could let us know, you know, how much they're using, because they have to buy it back, them are AEP. And I don't know, is that public record? AEP? The, the selling of a commodity like that?
I don't think so.
We just simplify it.
Just, I mean, with the original legislation that Alan wrote up.
Yeah.
I mean, we could add no farms or resale.
Yeah.
No resale.
Yeah, just give straight up no resale. I mean, we could give a variance to that at some point if we so desired, right?
Someone could come in and apply for a variance.
Yeah.
I think the reasonable thing is, the way you said it was solely for resale.
Yeah, if you're putting up solar solely for resale.
Yeah.
I agree.
There's a moratorium on that.
But if you want, if you just want that legislation.
Yeah.
That Jay has in front of him, I mean, you guys can vote on that next week, and you can add one line. Say, can we just add?
We can amend it and just put it on as amended.
I'd say we do that.
That's what we do.
Alan, what, I mean, do you have thoughts on it? I mean, you are part of this process.
No, I, I think, I'm in agreement with what I'm hearing around the table. I mean, that's.
So you can add that on there, and we can vote on it next week?
I'd rather have.
We have to amend it.
Yeah. Well.
Get the proper wording on it. Yeah, that was just a starting.
That wouldn't affect the person that's wanting to come in, because they're wanting to use a majority of all.
They're wanting to use.
That was my thing. I didn't want to, somebody that had already had thoughts, I didn't want to pull the rug out from underneath them.
They, their problem is they can't, they cannot get the electric they need to operate their facilities.
Well, we've got other places like that.
And we have other places too. The other places.
Seven to ten years out.
Exactly. Needs so much.
Yeah.
The other places need so much electric, solar farms or solar panels aren't gonna work. These guys won't need as much as electric, so the solar panels will get them over the hump, and then they can buy the rest they need from the electric company. So that's what they're wanting to do.
That makes a lot of sense.
Makes a whole lot of sense. Yeah, it's a completely different thing.
Yeah, all right, I like that. Okay, next is the noise ordinance. Now, we have talked this to death, and I would like for us to just sit here until we get it figured out. Because it's gonna be December before we vote anything in.
Did we ever, do we ever agree on decimals for that?
I think.
No, because he said there were so many different.
Right.
Different, dependent upon what kind of music it is, where it is. I mean, he went, his music is what, ninety decimals?
Out here, out here this weekend, he was at eighty-five.
Yeah.
And, you know, if any establishment plays at eighty-five, nobody's going. I mean, you're just, you're not gonna go to a establishment and listen to eighty-five decimals.
You can't hear.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
I think I keep the decimals out of it.
My opinion is the decimals just muddies it, and it's already having trouble being confused, but, you know, I'm willing to absolutely entertain anything. But I, I agree, we just need to put this to bed and be done.
I like the way it is, except for the hundred-foot rule.
Yeah, I, I could absolutely go with that.
The, talking to both owners, not station house, because, you know, most of it was, you know, doughboys. They're done by nine-thirty, and I know during, you know, the week, especially when you're in school, you know, kids have to go to bed early, people have to get up and go to bed, so they were fine with nine during the week and ten on the weekend. But if we want to do nine-thirty during the week, because that's usually when they're done, and ten on the weekend.
I don't think we're doing this for that.
No, we're not, but I'm just saying for the betterment of people to have to live close to it, you know?
We just have to remember that the times are just when they can't have anything heard outside of their real property.
Yeah.
All the rest of the time, it's still under what we're having now, so the times are kind of arbitrary.
That's the only reason.
I mean, because we're not having a problem with loud music after nine or nine-thirty, so the time could go away, and it's not gonna change, because that's just when they can't have anything heard. The only thing I don't know is real property, their property lines, or their building. It is, absolutely. So, I mean, that just shortens it to, you know, and if we take the hundred foot away, we're really doing that by taking that away, because it's still there.
Hold on a second, Eric. When you take the hundred foot away, it's a reasonable interpretation, an officer outside, it's not limited to a hundred feet or fifty feet.
Right.
That was the reason that we were talking about taking it out of legislation.
Well, the other way.
Loud offensive when the officer pulls up on the scene.
And that's why we kind of talked about the decimals, because it, it's just another layer of protection, and there are several places, as, you know, Ralph spoke, that have them. So I, I'm just trying to look out, because, like you said, it's gonna be an interpretation of the officers that's there. And if we had another layer, then there's no interpretation, you know, it's like, oh, it's over this amount, turn it down, or it's under, see you later.
People are saying the decimal readers aren't official, but neither are readers.
Radars are official. They're sending every year for calibration.
You can fight it in court, and you can say, when radars go out, they go like this.
Correct.
And if you go to court and you say, okay, well, there was like five cars, and your radar goes like this, how can you prove?
But if they hear, if they get Doppler return, and when you go past, it goes up at least two decimals and falls off, they know they were tracking your car.
I'm just, my whole point is, if there's a decimal reader.
Yeah.
But we can't compare it to Doppler radar, because then that's undermining our entire police department doing Doppler work. I mean. That's totally.
Yeah, I guess it's a different thing, but I'm just saying, it is, it is another way.
But where would you want it read from?
I, I don't think that the noise ordinance is written and is enforced in the village is something that you want to take the officer's discretion away with in arbitrary. Meter that says it's five decimals here, but if I walk towards the door, it's ten decimals, and if I go in the bar, it's eighty-five.
All right, it's not gonna stop the calls, they're gonna keep calling, and.
I, I don't think it's.
So why change it all?
I don't think it's a necessary.
Care about the hundred foot.
Part of enforcement. If you want, if you want it in as enforcement, I can write it. If you're asking my opinion, do I think you need a decimal? I don't think so, because I think it's a reasonable person test, a reasonable officer test, a reasonable neighbor test.
Well, then why do we need to take the hundred foot out?
Because if somebody is only ninety-nine feet, no, because if they're ninety-nine feet by wheel, they can beat that ticket because.
The hundred, the hundred feet is just because if I'm standing on the sidewalk, and I'm only twenty feet from the door, I'm not a hundred foot away. When an officer pulls up, it's not gonna be a hundred foot away from any house or liquor establishment in commercial.
There's no, you don't think there's any houses within a hundred foot?
No, when the officer shows up.
When the officer shows up, I don't think there's anything more than a hundred foot away from where he's pulling up. I don't think anyone has a setback a hundred foot away, and if it is more than a hundred foot away, and he can still hear it, there's a problem.
I'm just saying, we've, we've gotten so many complaints, people sleeping with earplugs, because they can't, you know, they can't sleep.
So many complaints, how many, what's, how many households have complained?
Well, I know what you said, like five, but.
Maybe five.
We have thirty-two hundred residents, we have, all complaints have came from five households. Not saying that makes it right.
It doesn't make it right.
Proximity is an issue, is the issue with this, is that, you know, and it's like I, when I spoke to the, something else that worked there, you know, the point was, you know, you, you get to be here at whatever time in the morning, you know, and then you go home to the quiet, the quietness of your home to go to sleep, nobody's in right in your sleep, but, yeah, but, so it's, it's all, you know, who's, who's impacted? Yeah, it's not thirty-five hundred people, but we've got two miles from here, we have, we have the village, so, so it's not gonna impact that. It's just, let me back into this. I don't know, since we began this discussion, it has been the most peaceful, quiet time in town, so what's wrong?
I haven't had one complaint come through court.
Well, and, and the thing of it is, is that I haven't had one either. So, I mean, something, somebody's attitude has changed.
Yeah.
Already. I make the motion that we keep it the way it is. That, we, you know, I mean, right now, right now, I have, I, it's been about seven a week, I have not had one.
Yeah, I looked on the chart that Alan sent out, and there was no noise complaints.
That's why, why take the hundred foot out now then?
This weekend, but it was on things, it was on the bikes. It was, it was the music from the bikes, not the establishment.
So I really, I guess what I'm saying.
It's the transient noise.
Yeah, absolutely.
It has been self policing. Yes, yeah, that, that's.
Court.
Yeah.
That's where.
Your word is court.
Yeah.
Should we're talking about this thing the way it is?
No, yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, if we're gonna change anything, I like what Bill put together.
I didn't, I didn't put that together. That's just a rumor. This was written by a councilperson.
With this, with this, with all these green changes, I like that, but it doesn't make any difference. What it is, if, if, if people don't want to abide by it, then the only, the only.
They just want a clear set of rules, right?
Right, right.
And that's, that's what, that's what Mike was really talking about, and I think it is clear.
And Mike talked, you know, it's, it's enforcement, you know, it needs to be enforced.
I just, I just, I just, see, except for the hundred-foot thing, I would wipe out.
I think the only things I would, I would think.
You know, and I just, I just, I think we need to just leave all of them alone, because just by, just by the discussion that's gone on, it has changed the entire.
It came to the fore in front of the folks that are the most impacted by the noise, and they've learned to get along.
I think, and that's the way that I, that I would interpret that, based on, based on where we are now, where we have come over the past couple of months. I just, I don't.
That's how that gets said.
You know, because whatever's written just needs to be, hey, you know, it's too loud, but need to turn it down.
Is there a reason, if you're, if you're going down the path of keeping this, is there a reason to keep the hundred-foot rule?
No, that's what I would say.
Or do we just take that section out and keep the existing code the way it is and move on with it?
Yeah, and I would be the same.
Just so everyone is clear, we have the hundred-foot rule in the noise ordinance.
Right.
But it's not in the disturbing the peace ordinance.
Correct.
That is right.
And the bikes is twenty-five feet, because they're on the public roadway or right-of-way.
Then, let's quit talking to death, take the hundred foot out, keep it how it is, we need to focus on enforcement, it just needs to be enforced. So that's, that's your lane, Alan.
And, and I think, I think the, the business, I think now they understand how important this is.
Yeah, I mean, I never really heard it anyways, but I mean, I understand over there.
There are times that it's.
If you want good neighbors, you have to be one.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's, that's really kind of what it comes down to, and I, I think, you know, I think we, I think by the discussion, it, it has.
And, and they're like, you know, we just wanna, we'll do whatever, we just wanna know what we're supposed to do.
Good.
So.
You want the time friends to stay in, you just want the hundred foot out.
It makes, yeah, either way is okay on that.
You'll have that legislation put together for the next day.
Yeah, it's just editing.
About two minutes.
Pass it, get it done.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, special events permit. The only reason I'm, I wanted to discuss this again is because I think what we spoke about, I spoke with Mayor about it, what we, what we started off with has now just got too complicated. I think it needs to be streamlined and less complicated. If it's private property, I don't care what you do on private property. Okay, if, I don't.
To interrupt you.
Yeah.
Since you and I discussed that.
Yeah.
There, there was some things brought to my attention, which kind of, I do understand why we, we do care what's done on private property. The, and the biggest thing is, someone gets a permit to sell their food. Okay, then they set it up in their front yard, and they start selling the food in their residential yard every day of the week. It is legal, if you just say, if we take that part out. We have a possible way around it. Wendy and I spent the day driving downtown to Columbus to our meeting and coming back and over lunch and everything else. I would like to put something together and present to council, which I think is gonna meet. Wendy and I have just tried to play every angle on it, and I think it would meet everyone's expectations and get rid of this giant mountain, because that seems to be what we've done. We've taken the little permit thing, and it's, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, and the council or the residents brought it up the other night.
Yes.
He was correct.
Yes.
I, I kudos to him, what he said, and he was a hundred percent correct. It's causing problems like with the men's club, it's causing problems for this. You and I talked, and you're suggesting, let's just, if it's on your own property, do what you want. Well, we did that years ago, we had nothing pertaining to garage sales. And then what happened, people wouldn't clean up their yard.
We all drove past.
And they had junk all over their yard, and when they went out to clean it up, I'm having a garage sale, he sticks a sign out. And he had a permanent.
Six weeks.
Six weeks, eight weeks, there's my garage sale. So we cannot say, we can't go down that road of what you're doing on your property is your business, but I think we've got a way to kind of get around this and to make it work, and to take care of the churches, the men's club.
And I think.
And everybody else, which is the ultimate goal, I think.
The only time they should be coming to us is if they need to close the roads. I don't think we need to.
And that's.
Special permits, I think.
Yeah, it's.
Oh, and like having like, you know, forty-five days ahead of time because block parties or?
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of part of the thing.
Did you guys create like the block party? Because there's nothing in legislation about it.
No.
There's.
So I don't know why we've been doing block parties all this time.
And that's why I think maybe we just get rid of the. There's been a, when I walked in, there was a form to do.
There was a form to close down a street, you had to get.
Yeah, was that called?
They was calling that a block party, and they was, and they was saying it was up to the mayor's discretion. And so someone comes in, and we had some people over in, over in the loop, over in Chestnut, not a big deal, and they would close it. They'd come in with their permit, probably last year, three times, four times, close it on a Saturday, they'd bring in a big balloon for the kids to play, and the neighbors were all good, and everyone signed. I mean, it wasn't bad.
Yeah.
But we're kind of to the point, I think we do away with block, and we got checking the legislation, there's nothing in our legislation about authorizing block parties. So I think the route we need to go is possibly will, and it's part of some of the stuff we talked about, we do street closures, and street closures will be authorized by council.
And should be in forty-five days, at least forty-five days ahead.
In advance, because we was getting block party, last year I got block party requests, what, three days? I'd get it on a Wednesday, and they want to shut the road on Saturday for their party, and we were doing that. But, you know, it just, I think this is something that we need to, forty-five days, let, let council make the decision to close the street. The chief can close the street at any time, but he doesn't want to take the authority to close it unless it's an emergency. He's made that quite clear, and anything over and above that, he thinks should be a council decision. And I like the way it went, so.
Okay, he'll have something.
Let us put something in writing for the council to look at, because I think we've kind of covered all the little, you know, get rid of the block party.
Yeah.
Change special events to road closures, street closures, and streamline the whole process a little bit.
So that would make it so the five-oh-one C3s don't have to come in at all.
Uh, if what we were looking at was basically we put in an exemption in there for.
Okay.
For property, doing stuff. We'll, we'll get you something in writing with all the details to look over, but I think we've kind of stumbled into something that may work. So if we can streamline the whole process, I think it's best for everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, we've already discussed solar panels, I think we're good with that.
I have a question on permits. When somebody comes in for a permit, do they get something then ready to take with them?
What kind of permit?
A solicitor. So he would, any solicitor should have a copy of something, a badge.
If they're a solicitor, they should have a badge, they'll, they drop off the paperwork.
I've been busting the Kirby guy constantly.
And we bring them back in.
Well.
When we have their badge ready.
So I actually ran into on, in Walker Point, there was a gentleman, and I saw him going up to different houses, and I make sure I watch that because of, I'm a big pro of being vigilant for your neighbors. I asked him, and he had a slight attitude, and I get it, he's probably been harassed. I said, do you, did you get a permit? Do you have a badge? Do you have something for that? And he said, we're not selling anything, we are going through and asking if people want to have their roofs looked at. We are asking if they would like a free inspection of their roof. He said, we're not selling anything, so they're getting around it with that, and I don't know.
No, he's, if someone would report him, and we catch him, the police officer will go after him.
Okay, so I am going to do that because he got an attitude with me, and I'm like, bro, I just want to make sure you are in your proper lane. He's like, I'm not selling anything, I'm not sale, it's no sales, it's no sales, and I'm like.
What's no sales if they don't say yes?
Right, 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 so.
Are you gonna redo my roof for free?
It's solicitation, he's going door-to-door soliciting business.
I know, and he said, no, it's not, because I'm just offering a, I know, but I didn't want to have a big, so I thought I would ask in this setting.
Yes, any, anyone going door-to-door should have a badge that says Village of Commercial Point, it'll have their company name, it'll have their name, and it will have the expiration date on it, and that badge is to be visible at all times. So if someone knocks on your door. So if someone knocks on your door and doesn't have that, you need to let us know. Adam and I went out two weeks ago and we drove this town, we heard that there was a guy, Kirby guy.
Yeah.
We, we, we hit, and the only thing, I'm circling neighborhoods, he's circling neighborhoods, and the only thing we get back is Adam said, there's a guy, look pickup truck, I keep seeing circling the neighborhood.
Yeah, they, they drive a big man.
If I see him and I report him, I will follow them until y'all catch up.
I'll just hold him at house, I'll be like, yeah, come on in, show me what you got.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then call us.
Yeah, I'll be like, hey, yeah.
Yeah, there was that too, so.
They should have a badge.
If there a, is there somewhere that states that, because I would like to post that.
Paula handles all of them when they come in.
So it's on our website, perfect.
If you type in solicitation, it pops up, I think that's how I found it.
Yeah.
And I told this guy, he said it, it's at the office still, you know, it was actually fourth of July. And I said, it's at the office. I said, great, I got to queue to the office, let's get out and we'll find it. Uh, uh, I gotta go.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna buy, sir, I'm your lawyer.
Okay, anything else on the permits? Okay. So next, uh, we're going to go into executive session, hopefully, we'll see. In this pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section one two one twenty-two G three, I move that we enter into an executive session, a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject of pending or imminent court action. Have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion.
Motion. Second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Let's go.
Can you take a roll call book, Brandon? Just make sure everyone was on, thank you.
Ross?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Will there be any business after?
Yes.
Executive session, okay. Just for those listening.
Yes, we will come back, but it's just very brief business afterwards.
And we will go on mute, so they won't think that something's wrong with the audio.
I will be turning this down to mute while we're in executive session.
That's okay.
I guess we should say, just so everyone watching knows that we just voted and came out of the executive session. We'll continue with the meeting.
Okay, um, came back at seven fifty-four. Any additional business?
I have one item. The, uh, I think I mentioned to everyone that we was looking into getting prices for cleaning ditches, mainly the ditch over at Walker Point. We got two quotes, I got the second one came in actually today. The first quote was eighty-nine thousand, was a little over eighty-nine thousand dollars. The quote we got today was about thirty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Wow.
That was total, not below that, it was total thirty-seven.
Yeah, so the, well, what we're looking at there, and it appears to be close to the same stuff.
Yeah.
So, and what we would like to do is go ahead and clean out, and we're talking Walker Point, the ditch is, it's never been cleaned out, to my knowledge. And once we get them cleaned out, and this is removing some trees and everything else.
Yep.
Once we get them cleaned out, then we hopefully have the right equipment and the manpower, we can keep them clean. If we want to hit them once a year, twice a year, Mike will have the equipment to go down there and do it. But it's getting the first time done. And this quote here, the guy also gave some hourly prices, if we would be looking at possibly some areas of putting stone in to stop erosion, bank erosion and stuff like that. So it may be that thirty-seven thousand did not include any of that, it did not include any trees. If we cut them down and have to have, if his wood chipper, if they're bigger than six inches, his wood chipper won't take them. So we'd have to get a dump truck all the way. So I think a safe bet would say fifty thousand is maybe what we're looking at for something like that. It's still a lot cheaper than the ninety thousand of the other guy. So we don't need any legislation to do it. John Gross has the ability to do anything under seventy-five thousand dollars. But I didn't want to spend this kind of money on a project without council's blessing.
No, that's.
I think it's been needed.
That's an investment, because we, it, it's always been left to the HOA to try to manage that thing, and a lot of that was, a lot of that could very easily be some village responsibility, because the standards have changed. During the time that we had the phases built out, first, second, third, and three B, three A and three B, by the time we had all those things, the standards for development had changed as far as drainage, dishways, and those things go, so.
And we still have a lot of the drainage from like the center of town.
Yes.
Goes through that ditches. Some of the stuff from West Side to Green ultimately goes through those ditches. So it's just not all Walker Point residents that go into that ditch, it's, it's one of the village's main waterways.
It is, yes.
The ones in front of West Side of Green look really good.
And we're getting there with those and getting that cleaned up. So if, just want to make sure council, there's no major objections, uh, like I said, John Gross can go ahead and sign the contract and do this. So I'll talk with him and we'll see if we can get, hopefully get this thing started.
Excellent, thank you.
Is there anything else?
Yeah, the Belshazzar project, is that still getting done this year? We're coming to the end of the season. We had that, we had said to get it done this year before prices went up.
I don't recall hearing anyone saying.
We asked for a quote.
Yeah, and he said to get it done this year, because we've already, we're spending two hundred and fifty extra thousand, because it's going to put off. And I thought that that was going to be done this year.
I don't know that, we said it could be because it was so late.
When we talked in the budget, the money was there, and he said that's enough to do Belshazzars, and we said, well, you know what?
Does council want to move forward with Belshazzar, first of all?
I'm afraid it'll be a million next year.
Well, it very well could be. Does council want to move forward?
Yes, yes.
Okay, do you, is council interested? I know what was on the original discussion was, since we got to tear the whole road out of going ahead and replacing the storm sewers, putting in curbs, sidewalks.
I said it right.
And, yeah, otherwise you're just going to grind it all down and just start blacktopping again for the next thirty years.
No, let's, let's do it, it's the old downtown, let's get it, let's get it so we got pitch to start and.
Are we interested? I know there was discussion about streetlights. Someone said we don't need, don't need any additional streetlights.
Not in that area.
I realize it's pretty bright down there, okay.
So we're on those dimmers.
I, I will get with Susan, then we will move forward on this and see what kind of price she can get together. She had something put together at one time and it was, it was way up there, so.
It was like six hundred and.
Six or seven hundred thousand dollars.
The original that I had was three fifty.
Right.
Yeah, the original one, yeah, okay. I will tell her the council wants to move forward, take off the streetlights and tell her to put something together and see if she can get an estimate. If she can, and we can get it figured out and get something out to bid, it would probably happen next year.
Yeah, I'm sure, at this point.
At this point.
Yeah.
Yeah, at this point.